Good evening, welcome to the Town of Sisro Planning Board meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Chuck, can you lead us up, please? Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the October 15 minutes. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes, minutes have been approved. Now, we will open the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on any act of application, you may do so now. Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public input and move on to the first agenda item. This is a sign permit for the property 8010 Brewton Road for the Wilkins RV sign. Good evening, gentlemen.
Green lights on. Done. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. David Rosanti, Metropolitan Sign Company in Bolwensville.
Andrew Deesler, Wilkins RV.
We're here this evening for the signage that I see you have on there already. Placed the existing signs. Recently, all the signs being replaced in the same spots. We are adding an LED message center, one on each side of the pylon, one on the very north side, one on the south side. And the letters on the front of the building afterwards, but I see you have that there. That's the tower on the building tower, and we're replacing signs up there on the three sides that are their existing signs right now in the same spot. We have the front of the building right there, those four foot letters, and the entrance sign. There are two little enter parking signs, aren't they? Yeah, the two parking signs that we're going to be putting in the parking lot near the service area.
Said everything? We'll open up the questions. Jim?
I'm good.
Chuck?
Did you say the roadside signs are going to be electronic?
Yes, the top panel, the only part that's going to be illuminated on the top panel is the word Wilkins. Okay? The background is graphics that is their logo they have on all the locations. So, Wilkins will be illuminated underneath it, just on their single face, one on the far south side of the first pylon and the north side of the other pylon. Those are coming from the location in Fulton. They have one double face sign, so we're splitting them, putting them on the ends of the pylons.
You said the word Wilkins will be illuminated.
Yes, just the letters Wilkins.
Outside or inside?
Yes, internally illuminated LED lighting inside all the letters.
Well, it's a nice looking logo.
Their logo.
Mary?
Perfecting it.
Mary?
So, in one of our previous meetings, we were told that the green wasn't going to change, but it is, it's going to be red?
Yes, we're painting it red. We'll be painting that until the spring due to weather.
Okay.
A little bit until we get out there in the spring.
Okay.
It's very impactful. Talk about shades. This looks a lot brighter. Are there any today that might have a shade on those? I would agree, it is a little brighter now, it is more muted kind of red than we use. Perhaps on those both websites, both of our other buildings. Anything we do digitally is not going to be reflected.
You have that up now at another location? Can you try one of those, Mark?
Yeah, can you get one up?
You could probably.
What I could.
Especially if the. Script of this inside the sign all over. It is more muted, it's not bright.
Can you pull it up?
More of.
More a different sight?
More of this?
Definitely not a bright vibe.
It's more to the dark, a little darker side than to the brighter side. It'll be, it'll be, it won't be a high color.
Like barn red, not fire engine red.
From the dark finish. It's a little bit to the darker side than it is to the brighter side.
It's, yes, because it's very difficult.
Yeah. This, this is a little bit more accurate. You can see it, I know it's different on paper, but yeah. Yeah.
It does appear marker, but it doesn't.
Actually, the letters will be brighter than the paint on the poles and front of that five section sign, pole sign.
What's that? Mark, in your recommendation, should we be comfortable with that, or should we request?
Through reflection, getting this, this is a large area, right? Very visible location, and if you've got something within the project, I'd say, you know, should approve it. If this doesn't appear to be a fire engine red, or, you know, cherry red, or anything, a basic color seems to be a bit more muted, but you don't really know what it is. You know, we're looking.
Yeah, so if you look at the paper view, does that work?
Again, I have paper view here, you know, this part.
Yeah, that's brighter there, it's brighter there than here.
I'm reading paper, right? Just that's here. It wasn't written on paper, and it looks on the screen, and it looks up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks a lot brighter up there.
I'm not suggesting that. I just want to make sure you're aware that what you're looking at on paper might not be represented with C, and for something red in that large area.
Bigger than area.
Bigger than area, in the location that you have. Want to be assured that it's something that you want to see.
What I could do before it's being painted, I could, I could prepare a sample for you. You know, it's not going to be painted till spring, so I can get a sample over to Steve, and you can take a peek at it.
It's not.
What if, what if you brought it?
Okay.
What if you brought that sample to the next meeting? What if you brought that sample to the next meeting? Here.
Is it going to be painted in spring, right?
Hey, I'm guessing. Hey, weather's got to be consistent, weather to increase for four days.
So, it's going to be a while.
Yeah, so. I mean, I could, I could bring the sample and drop it off.
That's fine.
And that way.
It's, so, yeah, we can go through everything today, other than this presumably, and then we'll put it back on the agenda for the board to look at the sample. Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, if there's something that stands out, you don't want us to do that. Other locations, and it is moving down, this part is not.
Yeah, and we just want to see that sample. And that would work, right, so we'll plan on that. Yeah, great point.
What I'll have to do is I'll prepare a sprayed sample on the woman, so you'll see exactly what it is. I could do that.
Okay.
But I got to get the color together, and, you know, it might take a couple of weeks.
That's fine.
If you get that, I could do that for you.
Is the intention to leave those three sections of red alone? Because normally, when you see stacked signs like that, it's for other businesses to fill in those spots.
Yeah, we immediately.
It's existing.
So, it's there, we would, so it would be on there, it's from the logo. Stands out.
Sure.
Plus, once it's approved, we can't touch it. Can't add anything to it.
Just curious.
Understand that.
Fine with that.
Zach?
I'm all set.
Is my mic?
Yeah.
Steve?
The high-rise sign is just going to have two faces. Is it going to be the north and the west side? That high-rise on the building side, yeah. What's going to be on three, so it'll be north, south, and west?
Yeah, that's what's on there now.
Which one were you splitting? You said you were splitting one and putting, using each half on.
North and south?
Oh, the two pole signs out front that are existing.
Yeah, so you're going to just do one on the north, the one on the south? So, the other one is, what color will the other side of that be? On the top, nothing? It'll just be red too? Okay.
So, the backside of each of those pylons is not going to have a sign on it, it's only going to be a north facing and south facing.
Correct, right.
The insides are, they're just being on the red panel in the back.
Existing sign in the location. It's a double face sign, we're going to split it.
Yeah.
Then, that way we can use it. You got everything in the Town of Sisro. Two other locations. Over here.
Right, the electronic message board will read from both sides of each pylon sign?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Neil, anything?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Any of those things we do on, if it's required or needed, we would do.
The LDD sign is programmed when first alert and everything comes up, goes on to that LDD message center.
Mark?
I think I would express my concern.
All right. So, you get us the colors. Next time we meet, once we have the colors, we'll take action. No need for you to be here unless you want to be, and we'll vote at that point. All right, terrific.
As far as the color goes, everything else we can.
Everything else is fine.
Oh, great, okay.
But we're not going to approve tonight. We'll prove everything once we get the colors, but we're good with everything else that we've gone through. So, as presented, it will be approved, I would presume. Once we have, once everything that's been presented will be approved, I would presume, once we have the colors and confirm that they'll work, okay?
When is the next meeting?
Second, third Wednesday of this month.
You can't do any construction until then.
Correct. All set?
Concerning the signage?
I think we're good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for your considerations, appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night. And the next agenda item is for a site plan for Ryan Zeller. This is for the property 8665 Brewton Road, a proposed trailer yard, sales yard. Welcome back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Neil Zinsmeyer, Napparella Consulting for Mr. Zeller. He was here last month, he presented the project. Since then, we've gotten comments from Mark Parish, which we've addressed on this plan. I can run through them if you'd like.
Please.
We'll go through each one, one by one, real quick. Number one, the width of the parking spaces, we now have labeled on the plans. One B, the limits of trailer display, you can kind of see. We shaded an area that kind of limited where the trailers can be parked, so they're not willy-nilly all over the place, based on that hatching on both the front and the rear of the property. Details should be provided for the proposed gravel area. We have shown that on sheet C2. The gravel area is the new area to the northeast that you can see there. The nearest hydrant, there's actually a hydrant right at the driveway, as you're coming into the site there on our side of the street, we labeled that. Number three, the following comments on lighting, landscape, and signage. The landscaping plan, we went through the code, we really sprinkled about everything you could on the site on both Brewton Road facing the residential complex to the east, and then as well, some screening towards the north. The screening on the north is a pine tree type screening, street trees along Brewton Road, and then shrubs around the building, shrubs around the trailer display area. We were close to what the town requires, we did our best. We have a chart as well that kind of labels species and the quantities. It's pretty close to what the town requires on their new landscaping requirements. Three B, the colors. So, what we did with the colors, if you can switch. Our rendering here, what we did is called out the roof to be repainted, and that has already taken place, so what you see is what was already done. It's all solid white, it was shortly after the last meeting that was done, correct?
Yeah.
So, the roof has been done. Now, we're just on to the front of the building. Formerly, you can see the red, white, and blue color scheme. Now, we're on to the more dark gray industrial look. Bottom half, about three foot up, will be the darker gray, and the rest will be the light gray. We call out the colors themselves. We don't have a sample, but we call them out as Sherwin-Williams gray screen and Sherwin-Williams iron ore, which is the darker color on the bottom, and then the roof line as well. Three C, the owner and zoning of the adjacent properties. We have labeled those on sheet C1. Three D, the dumpster. We do have a dumpster, we show it on C1, it's in the back, middle of the parking lot, way in the back. Zoom in on that mark.
Up here.
There you go. So, that's a single dumpster, that's what's on the site now, and then we also have a screened enclosure detail on sheet C2. Detail seven, it's the chain link fence with privacy slats. And our final comment, three E, signage. We are not proposing a freestanding sign at this time, it's just the building signs that you see there on that graphic. Syracuse Trailer obviously is the business name, and then their supply manufacturer of trailers themselves, just for brand identification, they're smaller, there's not really attention grabbing, it's just while you're through the lot, you can see the brands that they carry. That's, that's pretty much it from the engineering comments. We'd be more than happy to answer any of the comments or questions you folks have.
Just quickly on the signage on the building? We're going to have to reduce to just the business sign, because that's, that's excessive of what we typically allow. So, the branding signs would need to go away.
Just, just the business.
Yeah.
No, reduce size of the.
Reduce to zero.
Okay, they weren't on the building, allow? I'm just pulling maybe back the freestanding sign, no written brand, hardy or shirt, Chevy Ford.
I think we would look at, look at that, right?
We're not proposing freestanding, I'm just, in the future, if we do a freestanding sign, quickly, we'll.
What do you think, Mark?
You. Brand that they carry, that on all over the place, I don't, I don't see the difference.
Rogers Burdick, that's their company name.
No, I was curious on the.
Burdick Mazda.
Name to say, Toyota. G.
It picks up one building, each building, plus there's a lot of discussion at this time. Not a time to just say, you know.
I think it's the presentation of how you have it, very cluttered, and you can't, like, what is your main business sign? There's so many signs.
If the larger one of the door is the business sign.
Right.
If we oriented it differently, or are we talking a hard no?
I'm just one vote, but I'm a hard no. Other thoughts? We're talking about the building signage.
It does, it is a lot of little signs.
Well, I think if they were, you know, obviously all the same size, you look, you know, in balance on the building, I thought they would look good personally, but, you know, if you guys said hard no, they would, they're obviously not for long.
How many would there, would there be? I mean, is that, that's what it is right now?
About three on each side.
Six total?
Yeah, and they're only one, but, Mark, you can't. You're only talking two foot tall, this guy one foot tall, they're not huge. It's not meant to be large from the streets, as you walk into the building, it's just for identifying.
But it is a little busy with six of them, besides the name of the business.
Yep. No, it's not there, huh? Yeah, no, okay, I don't think, no, I don't see sign on that one.
What do you think about separating the trailer dump from the word Syracuse Trailer Depot? Play up the Syracuse Depot and play down the picture of the dump truck? Because Syracuse Trailer Depot is quite small in general.
Well, that's our logo, so I just.
Well, they'd both be there, only in different sizes.
Do what with it?
Take the Syracuse Trailer Depot, blow that up, maybe half again the size, twice the size, and what's left appropriately, the dump trailer above there. That's what I'd do. Because Syracuse Trailer Depot is quite small, I think.
I think it'll be pretty big once it's on the building.
Okay. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I just, it's already our logo, it's on, yeah, I don't, I don't want to.
Rearrange it?
But if the brand stuff's not acceptable, that's fine, we don't, we won't put them up. We haven't had a media, so.
Good. Be much cleaner.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe make that a little bigger, and because the other signs aren't going to be there.
Jim?
The, the brick look on the front of the building, what, what material is that?
Jim, I think that just represents, it's a masonry front, right? The building is block, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all.
It is, it is block.
So, it's just representing the, I don't think you'll see that.
Okay.
The lines won't, won't be visible.
They won't show up, okay. Okay. You'll have the, the two, the contrast with the two different colors. All right.
Chuck?
I'm all set, thanks.
And you said that's gray, but that to me looks like beige tones and browns in your picture. But you said it's gray, right?
You followed it out on the plans, you talking about the lighter one or the black?
Both, they both look like brown, shades of brown, good, okay.
Colors, Steve, is, you know, of that day.
Okay.
The lighter one is probably gray screen, the darker one is probably finer. I'm not a great color. Judged, so, to me, they look great.
Yeah.
Two different colors. When I picked, ran one in gray, it sounds like.
Yeah, and I don't see any lighting.
There's no lighting, but. On the face of the building, no.
Don't we need lighting?
There is, there is lighting. Yeah, there's some existing light poles. Yeah, so the lighting around, you know, it's lit, it's just not on the front of the building.
We don't need lights by entryways?
As long as that light gets over there, it's fine.
Okay. And thank you for adding all the landscaping, I think that's going to look really nice.
Very nice, yeah.
That's all I have.
Zach?
Like the chairman said, I'm only one vote, but I don't think we should be sitting up here asking you to modify your logo, and we also got to recognize what it is, it's going to be a trailer yard, maybe the signs, find a different way to display them.
I'm not asking to modify the logo? Chuck mentioned it.
Not you specifically, but that's your branding, stick with it, and is there any other options? Can you shrink them, shrink the signs down? Because I mean, if I'm looking for a cam trailer and they don't have them, why would I pull in there? That's kind of.
If I'm looking for a cam trailer, am I looking for signs for cam trailers, or do I see a trailer lot that sells trailers I'm pulling in? I don't even know what a cam trailer is.
I think you look on your phone before you even got it in your car, so you know where you're going.
It's just not something we typically allow. We have sign applications, it would never allow that, correct?
I think if all the signs met the square footage requirement, we would allow them, yeah. Now, when you exceed it, then you have, right, you've got that, that discretion.
We put, the total is only 149, half square feet of all the signs, that makes for a lot.
Well, it's just the front, it's just the building one, so one square foot for every linear foot. Yeah.
Frontage of the building.
Yeah, that's it.
High code.
Yeah.
Reward and allow more typically.
Can we see the picture again?
So, if you do 50 foot and go to the codes office, you can do it without us.
I don't know. I would, to your point, and that's kind of, you know, somebody that sells trailers, it's like, you know, we're proud to carry those brands, those brands aren't red, we own them, you know, it's a territorial thing, and, you know, it was, you know, we have a lot of, you know, to the track, can't, but we're really proud of the brand, so, you know, we like people that, you know, if you're driving by and you see, hey, these guys, you know, we got the best trailers in the area, you know, to me, it's a big deal. If, you know, there's, you've got other places in Ida County that really, you know, sell junk from Mexico and stuff like that, you know, we, we're proud that we're selling American-made, US steel trailers, and, you know, so representing those brands, I personally think is kind of a, you know, hey, you know, look, you know, I'm gauging interest, I'm, you know, maybe I drive by every day, it's, you know, cans my favorite brand, and I pull in there, you know what I mean? You know, and.
Now, what if, what if you made all those signs uniform, the same, and had them all on the left side of the door stacked? And then, and then made your sign bigger?
We would definitely make them uniform and not just throw it on there.
Well, they're all different sizes, but what if they're all the same size stacked? Well, they're all different sizes, but what if they're all the same size stacked on the left side of the door, and then your sign was bigger and more prominent on the middle of the building?
I think I, I, I think it would just look out of balance. Uh, the reason why I picked them on each side is I think it balances the face of the building.
But if your, if your side was, sign was bigger.
They're already over the fifty feet.
Oh, that's it? They can only be that big?
Well, we have the ability to go beyond that, but we should look at that. We do, we do go beyond it.
Well, again, if you don't want the brands up there, it's fine, but to his point, you know, to your point, and, and that is kind of the exact thought process I had is, you know, hey, you know, these are the brands, you know, somebody's driving by and, oh man, I've been looking for a cam. You know, I've been to this guy, but, you know, they have, but, you know, if you drive by a car dealership, you can clearly see what kind of car they sell from the road, you know, by the sign. Um, that was the thought, so.
I'm just suggesting it might look neater if they're all the same, your dimension, depth, instead of looking like bumper stickers up there.
Absolutely, that was, that is, yeah.
A thought.
So where are we?
I don't know.
I think they have, they were quick, they want to take, are they ready to take them off? Do they want to take another shot? Is reorganizing, is it coming back?
We're going to the zoning office with it.
Well, it's going to exceed. It's, the building's only sixty-two feet wide.
Yeah.
It'll end up exceeding.
They'd have to reduce.
So either the variance or, and thi- this was a planning process, I mean, you know, uh, yeah. Yeah. If, if a freestanding were to the right of the building with those six signs on it, you know, would that be better than being on the front of the building? I don't know.
We just said with the logo.
Okay.
Scale it up.
All right.
Well, you're going to get proof.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to be within that fifty feet. The size, the size is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, they say the same. Syracuse Trailer sign has to pick.
Yes.
We're at the ten by nine.
Is it represented on here, right?
Yes.
The same. Okay.
Mike?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm good.
Steve, anything additional?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Neil? Mark? I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second? Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the seeker. Neil, would you make a motion, a motion discussed, please?
Yeah. The seller sale jacket, which was clearly committed on the following one. The owner's key jacket, the owner elevation is presented by the animal kind of signboard, the article's application. Chevy incorporated by Red, AG, this site plan, and the board's approval, they're on, according to the actual product, must have changed under form, he doesn't just present appearing. Two, the only sign permitted on the front of the building showing the Syracuse Trailer Depot sign.
And would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck? Yes. Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, you're all set. Good luck with it. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You as well. Last item on the agenda is a minor subdivision for the property eight zero six three Bruton Road, two lots subdivision. Good evening.
Good evening. Dave Sliskey in the project surveyor with CT Mail Associates.
Uh, my name is Dave Sliskey. I'm with CT Mail, uh, representing the Hunt LLC. Um, this, uh, project had previously received site plan review this summer. Um, I believe at the time they were looking to lease the, um, property that's going to be the bank parcel. Um, the owners would like to subdivide the property as opposed to setting a separate lease. The development is still going to be a lease parcel. Um, and both parcels are going to be owned by the owner. What we did was we took the lease line that was approved and we created that, uh, as the interior property line. They reviewed the setbacks to make sure that there wasn't going to be a violation with, with what was approved. And they said it would still, um, satisfy the, um, setback requirement. So what, they liked to basically create two parcels out of, um, the existing one lot.
And this has no impact on the site plan that we approved?
No.
Nothing, no landscaping on it. Jim?
I'm, I'm good.
Chuck?
I'm also good.
Mary?
I'm, I'm good as well.
Zach?
All set.
As am I. Mike?
We're good.
Steve?
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, I'll review that.
Okay. All right, so Mark will review, get a letter out, and then we'll take it from there. After we set a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Neil, would you make the motion for the public hearing, please?
The two lots of public hearing, she'll commence at six thirty PM with sooner efforts, as the runner may be heard of, where the schedule meeting of the brand there on Wednesday, uh, November nineteenth.
And would somebody like to make any motion?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the motion. All right, we're all set. Thank you. Have a good night. That ends our agenda items. Any discussion from the team? Anybody? Do we have a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion. Me neither's adjourned.